...rolling again.
We're going to do it the way you want.
You guys give me a thumbs up when you guys are good? Good? Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Rockford Forward, we want to thank you for coming to the 2024 Town Hall. Thanks for Rockford Public Schools for hosting us. The purpose of this evening and the next hour or so together is just meet the five city council candidates that are running for three open spots. So the way this will work, each of you will have two minutes for an opening statement. At the end, two minutes for closing remarks. And we've prepared three questions, one being a two-part question, the other two being single-part questions. I'll keep you on your toes, and I'll just mix up the order in which the questions will be asked, so that no one gets into kind of this steady rhythm. It worked well with the school board. So Cheryl, you look like you're ready to say something. We'll open it up with opening remarks, Cheryl.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks for everyone for showing up. My name is Cheryl Scales, and I've been a Rockford resident for 30 years. I have been on the council for eight years, and I'm hoping to be able to serve another four years to finish up some of the activities that we've been working on for the last four to eight years. As a lot of you know, my husband Jim is also on the planning commission and very active in the city. We raise our two kids here through the Rockford Public Schools. And I'm also on the sustainability committee as the council rep, working on a task force to rewrite the zoning ordinance, which has been really fun. And my other passion is I am on the board for the North Kent Connect and on the Housing and Transportation Commission. So part of the focus that I've spent in the last few years is working with the master plan and hoping to, we have been working as a committee on rewriting the zoning ordinance to make more affordable and attainable housing options in the city, to make it welcome for our kids and grandkids to be able to come here and have a life like we had. So I'd like to continue and see that to be finished. I like to think I'm a good council member because I listen to both sides and analyze, and I always like to do what's best for the city. But I hope you consider me. We have a lot of great candidates. You can't go wrong with any one of us up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Tim, I'll hand it over to you for opening remarks.
Sure. My name is Tim Metuzak. I am a Rockford resident for the last eight years. I've lived in the Rockford area for about the last 12. I have two daughters that are going through the Rockford School System now. I work locally here at a local insurance agency, as well as another one in Grand Rapids. I'm involved with Rockford Chamber of Commerce, as well as other committees and boards. I'm chair of the Starter Summer Committee. I am chair of the Cross Memorial Library Board. I'm on the Cinco de Mayo Committee for the new block party we have going. I'm also a part of the Rockford's Got Talent Committee and part of the Grassroots Fundraising Campaign Committee for Cross Memorial Library Expansion. So a lot of the choices that city council makes affect the things that are important to me, and a lot of what's happening in downtown Rockford is important to me. So I figured that my next step or my next involvement in my involvement in the city would be to join city council. So that's why I'm here, certainly not because I was born, but because I think that I can bring some different perspectives and some good experience that I've gained over the years with my volunteer opportunities that I can bring to the city council.
Thank you. Dale, I'll hand it over to you. Two minutes for opening remarks.
Sure. Good evening. I'm Dale Dolman. I currently serve on the Rockford City Council, and I want to thank the members of Rockford Forward, along with the staff of the Rockford Public Schools and their media team for being here and helping facilitate this evening and making it available for others to take a look at later on. I've been a lifelong member of West Michigan, but I've lived in Rockford since 2008. I'm married to my wife, almost 41 years, Cheryl, who is a retired Spanish immersion teacher at Roguewood Elementary School. I've got three married adult children and seven grandchildren. And so it's been great seeing a family grow up, and I think Rockford is a great community to raise a family. I want to be somebody that a council advocates, Rockford being a place where people, families can thrive, people enjoy living here. I also want this to be a place where our business community thrives, because I want Rockford to continue to have places, great places to eat and shop and services that are available. Also, again, we just heard at the school board, a great school system. Want to support that, along with faith community here in Rockford. As an individual, I support integrity, honesty, transparency, and community participation.
Ed, I'll hand it to you for two minutes of opening remarks.
Sure. My name is Ed Ross. I've been a citizen of Rockford for 31 years, married with three children and five grandchildren, one on the way. So I thought that in order to name that one, I always, when I was on council, I always celebrated my grandchildren's birthday by announcing them, and I don't want this one missing if possible. But anyway, I've always been involved with Rockford since the day it landed here in 93, starting when I was like a soccer coach, the league coach. Got involved with the J.C.'s, was the president of the J.C.'s for a couple of years. Always have been community involved. I'm a member of the Lions. I'm actually currently the chair of Rockford's Got Talent, which is designed to raise money for the library expansion. I'm also a member of the Lions right now, because the J.C.'s are not around anymore. I've always loved Rockford. I love the people of Rockford, and I just wanted to make sure that we continue to keep this community moving forward in a way that we were, that keeps us, as I like to call Rockford all the time, mayor. We are a small community that really is a hometown, that is a slice of life for some people that they don't get in their own communities and stuff like that. So I really find Rockford really special, and when I served on the, as mayor before, I've been very involved in all the aspects of what this community does. I'm very aware of everything that's going on, even though I've been out of this for two years. I know a lot of the projects that we're working on, and I'm just always involved in what's going on, and it's something that you can count on to listen to both sides of what's going on and making sure that we are moving forward in a good direction.
Thank you. Terry, two minutes of opening remarks.
Okay, again, thank you. My wife and I came to Rockford in 1960. We've been married 65 years, and I was, came here to be a teacher and a coach. Coach basketball, football, tennis, girls softball. I've been a member of the Methodist Church since 1960. My wife and I have a hobby, sport memorabilia hobby. After I retired from teaching after 30 years, I kept coaching, but we opened a business in downtown Rockford called Sports Treasures at 111 in Cortland, which is where what is today.
Grow 111.
You know where it was there, okay. I was on the HUD Committee for 18 years. I've been on the council for eight years, been in the historical society for 30 years, been the president for 25. Every year, the vice president's supposed to take over, but they always decline. So I've had that job for a long time. I also write for the local paper. I've written over 1,200 columns since I've been in Rockford. And I've been on the council now for eight years, and the last two years as mayor. A mayor doesn't have any more power, but does have some responsibility, as some of you know, and I try to do the best that I can. This is a town that I've spent a lot of my life in, and I enjoy it here. I'd like to continue to work here on the council. Grow 111, by the way.
Thank you. All right, as mentioned before, we have three questions prepared. The first is a two-part question. I'll read it twice, and if there's, and I'll be reading it before a request, response. I'll mix up the order again for each question. So Dale, I'm going to have you lead off on this one. Please describe your involvement in the Rockford community. That's part one, as well as any relative experience that would qualify you to run for city council. So I'll read that again. Please describe your involvement in the Rockford community, as well as any relative experience that would qualify you to run for city council. Two minutes for each response.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I've been serving here, the city, on city council for the past four years. During this time, I've also been a member of the Planning Commission, being the liaison between the city council and the Planning Commission, and also the Economic Development Council of the city. I'm a retired pastor. I participate in the Rockford Area Ministerium Association here in the community. Worked with Jennifer, German from KDL, on an annual event here for the past three years to highlight or celebrate the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King, and I've also volunteered at the start of summer. So some of the things that I've been involved, also work as an umpire. I love sports here and have the opportunity to umpire a few Rockford baseball games as well. As far as the unique skills, again, we have a manager council, form of government, meaning our city manager provides the professional expertise to run the city, and I feel my responsibility as a council member is to represent the city. And I think as a pastor, I am a good listener. I talk to people. I hear what people are concerned of, and I'm hopefully able to reflect that back to the, to the city manager and to decisions before the council, so that we make the best decisions for the residents of Rockford.
Thank you. Terry, please describe your involvement in the Rockford community, as well as any relative experience that would qualify you to run for council.
Okay, well, I've been in the Rockford community, especially in a couple of areas that I think have done quite a, quite a good job. One was in coaching. Coaching helps you make decisions. There isn't hardly any coach that won't tell you that you make decisions all the time, and every time you make a decision, someone's happy, someone isn't happy. I know how to deal with that, and I also know how to sometimes make compromises or to move things along so they'll work good. I listen to people. I like to talk to them personally. I like to see your face when I'm talking to you. I don't like to talk to you on the phone very good, except to set up an appointment. With the historical society, with a lot of other people, we've had a major impact, I think, on Rockford, especially in the last 20 years. Because of the society and a lot of people's hard work and good leadership, we were able to move our museum from where it was, where there was no plumbing and no water, to a courthouse. We did the whole courthouse over again, all the systems, put in our displays. And one of the reasons people come to Rockford is because you have good things, like schools, courthouse, library, don't forget the library, and those things are important. I care about them. My kids all went to school here, and I love Rockford. That's a good point, too.
Thank you, Terry. Cheryl, please describe your involvement in the Rockford community, as well as any relative experience that would qualify you to run for city council.
Well, I too was a mayor, which I forgot to mention. So we have triple mayors here. And like I say, I've been at council for eight years, but in addition to that, I'm the sustainability, one of the founding members on the Sustainability Committee, and have worked in part on the task force for our climate action plan for that. And I'm also serving as, on the task force to update the zoning ordinance, which has been a long but important project. Additionally, in my North Kent Connect board hat, I've served on the building, the housing, and the transportation committees for that, all which I think interacts with government and nonprofits and how we can work better together. So we put together a seminar and invited all the municipalities in the area to learn about what our clients need in housing and transportation, and we'd like to, like to keep continuing that dialogue with that group. And as part of that, I wear a dual hat. I'm a representative for North Kent Connect and the city of Rockford on the Kent County Master Plan 2050 and the Housing Subcommittee, and then also on the Kent County Mobility Task Force, looking at transportation options outside of the Rapids. So I'm really excited about opportunities for that. My, I was looking at it, and I've been a civil engineer for 40 years now, which is hard to believe, and that gives me a great background in infrastructure, water sewers, storm, water tanks, and able to help the council members understand some of the opportunities that we have to infrastructure projects. So that helps a lot. And also, I, on my other side, as an engineer, worked for developers doing planning and zoning presentations, so I have that, that side to my experience as well. My kids went through Rockford. I was an officer on the Rockford Sports Booster doing fundraising, which is everybody's favorite, but somebody has to do it, and then the choir boosters as well.
Thank you. Ed, please describe your involvement in the Rockford community, as well as any relative experience that would qualify you to run for council.
Well, as I said, I've always been involved since the day it landed in Rockford. Currently, as I said, I've been chairman for Rockford's Got Talent. I'm on the Rockford Area Community Foundation, where I'm the vice president. Been a senior person for a couple of years, been on that for more than 20 years. Know much about the foundation. It started out at $2,000. Now, now I have over $750,000. Instrumental in getting us our dog park, instrumental in getting money for when we did the 9/11. Sorry. Healing Fields, yeah. We did Healing Fields for 9/11. You know, raised over $200,000 for area fire departments, always raising money for something or other. I've been involved with not just those things, but like the sojourn statue for our, I'm not a war-otter person. I've also been involved with the committee that did the hotel. If there's a committee, sometimes people call me to be on it, I guess is what I'm trying to say. And I really enjoy that, because I know a lot of great thoughtful people with very dear, different ideas when we gather together, that come at different things from different perspectives, and I really appreciate the people that actually serve on a lot of those committees that I, that I serve on. As far as special abilities, I own my own business. I have employees. I've been understanding when I served as mayor. I think it was instrumental in helping with the promenade negotiations, as far as making sure that that building stayed occupied in the way that we really originally designed it to be, and also helping, because I have employees, when we had an issue with an employee, working with that as mayor, to make sure that we took care of some issues that need to be done, to save the city money and get our, both our fire and public works department working together in a harmonious way, I'd say. But I've just been involved in pretty much everything, Ed, so, and I enjoy it.
Thank you. Tim, please describe your involvement in the Rockford community, as well as any relative experience that would qualify you to run for council.
Sure. Well, first of all, you can tell that we're not fed with questions, because we all blew on answer for this one in our introduction. As I mentioned before, I really started out my involvement with the community in coaching, like Terry did here. So I coached with Rockford Little League, Wolverine Ball, Rockford Area Community Services Soccer, Odyssey of the Mine through Lake Secondary. And then from there, I moved into, I was kind of curious about when they were looking for volunteers for the Starter Summer Committee, and I said, you know what, I'll try it. And I've been stuck there for eight years, nine years. Been the chair for the last six or seven. And it's one of my favorite weekends of the year. It's a lot of work, but I love it. But then, in addition to being chair of the Starter Summer Committee, I'm chair of the Cross Memorial Library Board. I'm also on the Grassroots Fundraising Committee for the crossboard, Cinco de Mayo Committee, Rockford's Got Talent Committee. I was a former Chamber of Commerce ambassador. So I really started my involvement through the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm still involved with the Chamber, but I've kind of branched out from that as well. And similar to what Ed said, very few of those have I asked to join the committee or asked to join the organization, but typically people come to me and ask me to be part of it. And I'm not great at self-advertising or self-promotion, but that's a reason, because people know things come. They think I'm going to be level-headed, I'm going to be thoughtful in my decisions. As far as skills that I can bring along, I mean, I'll pull up the elephant in the room. I'm the only one here that doesn't have any experience as a current facts member. Sometimes that's not always a bad thing. I can bring new ideas, new perspectives. I have a wide swath of contacts within Rockford, that I can contact between young, old, professional, personal, to bounce ideas off of, get opinions, because I think it's important to not just make decisions based on what we think, or what the five people that are on the chamber, or, sorry, that are on the council think. It should be a collection of ideas that you get from the residents. The council's five people representing every resident of the city of Rockford. And, okay, thank you.
Our next question, Terry, you'll be up. I'll read it twice here. If elected, what is your number one priority as a council member? So what, if elected, what is your number one priority as a council member? So I'll start with you, Terry.
My number one priority would be what it has been since I've been on the council and since I've been in Rockford, is to make the city better. But if you look at what the council can do, I think it's important that the council keeps in mind that we do things that's for the betterment of the whole town, not just one area, not just one group, not just one person, but everyone. You find out what that is by talking to people, listening to people. In addition to that, I think that I have a good knowledge of Rockford history, and Rockford history many times repeats itself. In the years that I've been in Rockford, a lot of major things have changed. I've been through those. We can talk about things like the bridge, the towers. They weren't completely popular back then, but they're for the betterment of the town. I think we also have to look at safety of our residents. We have to budget for that and plan for that, and it's important that we do that. City Hall also, I was in Rockford when they decided to take down that whole block and put City Hall there. Had a neighbor across the street that said, they're never going to move my house. I'll be here forever. And he found out how much they were going to give him for his house, and he was willing to go along with that. City Hall complex is all, used to be a whole block in Rockford. I don't think we have to tear a town down, but I think we have to be willing to make changes for the better. I hear about charm of Rockford a lot. We make our own charm. The charm we used to have, some of us gone. To me, charm was going to a football game on Lewis Street back in the 50s and 60s, all the cars on all the side streets. That's gone now. That charm is gone. But we have a new football stadium out there where people are playing, and that's making its own charm as a, so that's part of it, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed, I'll direct the question. You have elected, what is your number one priority as a council member?
I would definitely say there's just so many things that, there are, you know, top three are definitely water, our library, and finishing up this hotel, and more than, as everyone says, parking. I guess water would be the number one. I think we're getting to a point right now where we really do need to find another source of water that's separate from where our current three wells are. And I think that would give us a little bit of safety for this community if something were to happen, because if something were to happen, our three wells were going to be a little hurt. But I also think that parking is something that we need to look at. I've talked with that extensively. Some of the plans that we have, I think we have a good plan in place to expand parking in the Towers Parking Lot, but we need to educate our, our citizens more to understand that walking more than a block is not the worst thing in the world. And just have them, instead of having this parking issue be a place of conflict, have it a place of celebration, because we are going to go through a gear right now, as this hotel is being built, where people are going to get more and more frustrated as they have to park further and further away. And I think those are, that's where I'd be with those things.
Thank you. Tim, the question to you, if elected, what is your number one priority as a council member?
My number one priority would be balancing the growth and development of a city with, within the needs of the current residents as well. Obviously, we can't stop change. We can't stop roads. We can't stop innovation, and we shouldn't have tried to. We need that, as I said, the other words, we've left behind, but we also need to balance it with the needs of the current residents and make sure that we're focusing on them as well. Also, I want more community involvement in the process of the city council. I typically attend every city council meeting. I'm usually one of two, maybe three city residents that are outside the city council that actually attend meetings and see what's going on. And I'm not a big social media user personally, but I want to utilize it to make sure that people know what the agendas are, when the meetings are. I want to publish the minutes. They're all published on the city's website. There's obviously full transparency, but people don't know to go there. I want to make it more available, so people know what the agenda is, what the minutes were. I want to play, I want to give plain language explanations of the votes that were taken and what was approved or declined. I want to explain who voted how, and I want to explain in plain language again why I voted the way I did, because I want people to be engaged in the process. Like I said before, there's only five people that represent every resident of the city, and they should know what the five of us, or five of them, whoever's elected, why they're making the decisions they're making. And I, I don't think bad decisions are being made, not making it sound like that. It's just a matter of, I don't think people know. And when people complain about things that are happening in the city or that decisions the council makes, they often don't know the reason behind those decisions, and that's what I want to support. I want to make sure that the public understands why the council's doing the things they're doing. There's not a single person up here that's anti-Rockford or wants to do something that's negative for the city. We all want the city to grow. We all want it to succeed, but people have negative perception sometimes, because they don't understand the process, and they don't understand what the votes are, they don't understand what the issues are, what are behind them. So I want to really promote that to get a little bit more civic engagement, and whether it works or not, I hope it does, but that'd be my goal, is really push that.
Thank you. Dale asks, I'll ask you the question. If elected, what is your number one priority as a council member?
Yeah, I think, Brett's probably getting more than one answer to the number one, but one of the things, I think that's some of the things that the council as a whole has been working on, and I think it's really great, continuing to push for the expansion of the library, the successful fundraising in the village. I think, you know, we've been talking as a council regarding parking, that is something that we need to continue to work on. We've got a great Sustainability Committee that's doing a lot of work in that area. They'll be presenting something to the council soon regarding a proposal for the next steps, and so I think that's something as a council, we need to work with that as we move forward to be, continue to be the leader in Michigan as a, as a community moving to sustainability. Personally, something, a kind of a project I would love to work on if reelected, is to increase neighborhood engagement, participation. There's, I think there's some ways that we need to encourage people to do gatherings out in the front yard. We do a pancake breakfast on our cul-de-sac once a year to bring people together. Everybody loves it. I would love to see that pockets of that neighborhood-type gathering going on throughout the city. Maybe the city council or city Rockford can put out some grant money or some seed money. We'll give 250 bucks to the Highlands, and you throw a party, and 250 bucks to this area, which sees as very a low investment to get people out, talking, and meeting their neighbors. As much as we talk about it as a great community, I think we often confess, we don't know our neighbors like we used to, and I think that hurts us. And so if we're going to continue to be a great community, a community that thrives, we need to know our neighbors, and I think as a council, we can, we can encourage that, encourage the participation in our meetings as they become more connected to what's going on. I also have answered, I've put out on social media why I voted a particular way on some of the issues that, there was a lot of interest, because I thought that was important, and I would make sure that they are informed what we will do.
Thank you. Cheryl, if elected, what is your number one priority as a council member?
Well, all my fellows here have had a lot of great ideas and a lot of different options in different directions, and that's just a little smattering of what we deal with on city council on a monthly basis. We have, you know, our topics range all over the place, and our priorities change based on what the needs of the city are. So my number one priority is that we all have a great understanding of what we need to do to make our decisions and listen to the community and make those decisions where it's best for the community. Having a variety of views on the board, I think is really important, too, because we each can bring a special, specialty. each can bring a special, specialty and a different look to what we have, and we have on our current board, and in the past ones as well, have always felt comfortable to question each other, and be able to have a vote that's not always unanimous, and then walk out and still be friends. So we have to be able to look at both sides and consider all of that. You know, I think overreaching, I think we need to maintain our fiscally conservative spending policy, we make sure we keep 30% in our general fund for emergencies, and then that'll enable us to provide an affordable, safe, and sustainable homes for all our citizens and businesses.
Thank you. Third and final question before we move to closing remarks, time is going fast, so Tim, I'll have you lead off. Why do you want to be a city council member, as you all repeated? Why do you want to be a city council member?
Sure. So as I mentioned before, I've been involved in a lot of different organizations, different committees, things like that in the city, and it's really allowed me to gain appreciation for the city, for its residents, for its leaders, and I have considered myself a bit of a leader within those organizations, but I want to extend that further. I want to be able to help make decisions that are going to set this city up for success in the future. And I think that with some of the skillsets that I have, I'm in a, my professional life, I've been in management position, I've been in management positions most of my adult life, I have to make difficult decisions, I sometimes have to make unpopular decisions if they're for the greater good, and I think those are the things that I can bring to the table, and the different perspective that I can bring to the table. Again, I know I don't have the same experience as everyone else, but I really do think that I have experience within the community that will lend itself very well, and I want to put my talents to use in a bigger portion of the city. What I've been already, I'm proud of, but I want to go further.
Thank you. Cheryl, I'll direct the question to you, why do you want to be a city council member?
The number one reason is to be able to give back to the community that's been so good to us. I think, you know, I have some unique skillsets that can help the council move forward. I have a real passion for helping our neighbors and looking for affordable, attainable housing and transportation solutions, I'd like to continue that from both directions, for my nonprofit and from the city hat, and I'm just excited about our new master plan, our new climate action plan, and would like to get those started and moving in the right direction.
Thank you. Terry, I'll direct the question, why do you want to be a city council member?
The main reason is to continue to work to make our city a better place, to use my knowledge to try and help make good decisions for our people, also to make good decisions myself. One of the things that I think happens with a council member is that you know when you're on the council, you don't know everything, so you use other people, like your city manager, and your planning commission, and your DDA, and others, and I can work with those people, I think that's good, I know a lot of them. I think my experience living in Rockford is a good reason for me to continue to be on the council. Also, to be sure that Rockford's history says a lie, well, that's important to me, and it's important to some of our other people too, and I know Rockford history, and I can help to continue to keep that going. I would like to reiterate what others have said here, all these people here don't dislike each other, okay? We're friends, we've done a lot of the same things together, so I'm not on the council to get these guys off, I'm just offering myself as a possible representative.
Thanks. Thank you. DL, why do you want to be a city council member?
Yeah, well, it's, family and I, we lived in Venezuela for about 15 years, and while I was there, that really sparked an interest to me in, in politics and the political process. So when we returned, I applied for a program at Michigan State called the Michigan Leadership, Michigan Political Leadership Program, and I was accepted, and we spent nine months traveling the state, 12 men, 12 women, 12 Democrats, 12 Republicans, our Independents, just looking at a variety of different issues that the state and local government is dealing with, and I just fell in love with what was going on at the local level, and so after completing that program, I decided to run for city council, and was elected four years ago, and I want to continue in that role. I think I'm a good listener to the community, I try to respond to every email or phone call that a resident might send to us, I might not always agree with them, but I think it's important that they're heard, and that their opinion is reflected back. And I think serving on this council, and I think all five people here are doing it because they, they love Rockford, it's a great community, it's a way for us to serve, and I feel I still have some ideas that I'd like to see put into place over the next four years.
Thank you. Ed, why do you want to be a city council member?
I think it's important to point out that we are only five people that serve on the city council, and that leaves a very small margin for different decisions that happen within the city council that could go one way or another. When I was served as mayor, the first time we voted on Aurora, we turned it down, and that would have been a huge mistake had I not lobbied for us to vote on it again, and convinced a couple people to say, yeah, we're going to do this. Because what Aurora did for this community at the time that it really needed, not just our businesses, but our citizens, it provided a place for people to gather, it saved, I had businesses come up to me and say, we had already ended our contract with Visa and MasterCard, we were walking out of Rockford to make this year, but we're here now, and those businesses are still here today because of the actions that I did. And I have a good understanding for giving things a try, and I have a good understanding, I know that there, people were worried that, oh my gosh, we'll become a party town and stuff like that, never happened, I think Aurora's done a huge success for this community. In fact, other committees came to visit Rockford to see what we were doing. We had Linda, we had Megan, we had Jamie, they had a wonderful plan that they put together that really made it a place for our citizens to gather, and they had so many citizens walk up, it provided jobs for people at a Christmas time, I had kids walk up to me that were servers that said, hey Ed, my wife and I were not going to be paying rent this month, now we need to have Christmas, because we now have a job again. So, and it was a three to two vote first time, and three to two vote second time, I believe. Recently, our city had an opportunity to purchase some information that would detail where people travel in our community. This is stuff that Disney does, this is stuff that any big business does, this is stuff that other communities does, and we turned it down as a community. I thought that was wrong.
Well, that ends our questions, now we'll move to closing remarks. I want to remind everyone, especially those viewers that may be watching online, there are, city council's a five-member board, and we have three spots open, five candidates running, okay? So with that, we're going to start closing remarks, two minutes apiece, Ed, I'm going to hand it back to you to kick off the closing remarks.
As everyone says here, hey, the five people that are sitting before you are all good people. I don't think you'd go wrong with choosing any of the five of us, but there are subtle differences, and I think that I would like the citizens to look at those subtle differences this time around. We need people that are, understand that commerce, our business section in our community is vital to our taxes, it's vital to, you know, you can go to any town around here that's a little bit further north, and they have empty spaces in their businesses, Rockford doesn't, people are trying to get here, and I think that's a great thing for this community. And I think we need to be thoughtful in our decisions to make sure that we are driving those things. We also need to consider our citizens and their needs, whether it's a park deed, whether it's, you know, we have great plans for redeveloping our streets, moving forward, making sure that we always are thoughtful for our future with both our budget, being conservative, as Cheryl said, but also making sure that we are moving forward in a positive manner for everybody. And I don't think anybody here is going to, not in sort of a positive manner, but there might be some differences that could be a big change, and I'm concerned with that.
Thank you. Terry, I'll open it up for you to provide closing remarks.
Okay, I think it's important that the people of Rockford know the people on the city council. I know a lot of people, I've dealt with a lot of people, I've taught them, I've coached them, they know who I am, they also know some of the things that I stand for. And I can tell you a little story, it's a true story, when I was in high school, as a senior at South High School in Grand Rapids, every homeroom got to vote for someone to be on the student council. There were three people from my homeroom that were going to run for that position, and we talked to each other, and back in those days, you probably won't believe this, but it was a custom to not vote for yourself, so I didn't. I voted for another guy, a friend of mine. I lost by one vote. I can tell this audience, I'm going to vote for me, and maybe someone else will vote for me. Thank you.
Cheryl, two minutes for closing remarks.
That's a tough act to follow. You know what Ed mentioned, sometimes we're not always unanimous in our decisions, and sometimes it's technicalities is why we turn things down, and they come back to the next thing. And sometimes it's because we don't think that's a good use of the money spent, and it could be spent in another direction. So there's always two sides to the story, and I think that we need to understand we have differences, everybody has a different point of view, but in overall, the whole council is looking out for what's best for all the citizens of Rockford. And I feel that I have done that, I'll continue to do that, and we'll always have an open door for anyone that needs to speak about anything, and I look forward to your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, two minutes for closing remarks.
Sure. So, again, I know that I don't have the experience of some like competitors up here, but they're not really competitors, I've gotten to know a lot of them that I've known either over the years or recently, and there's not a bad person up here, there's not a bad candidate up here. We all want what's best for Rockford, I think what I bring that's a little bit unique is just a new perspective. I'm very open-minded and new to new ideas, but also I'm very calculated in my decisions. I'm a fan of taking all the information that we can, disseminating it myself, but also getting other things from other people around the city. Being one of five representatives that represent everyone in the city is not a responsibility to be taken lightly, and you have to remember that you're not just making decisions that impact you, or impact one particular portion of the city, you're impacting the entire I also want to add, that only one unique thing is that I'm the only candidate up here that is endorsed by my parents, Mike and Sandy Matusa. Ask me to go somewhere, let me go somewhere.
All right. DL, you'll close us out, two minutes.
It's all our next, so, to follow, but again, I'm thankful for this opportunity that's been given to us to introduce ourselves, or reintroduce ourselves to the Rockford residents, and to think it's exciting that there are five people that are running for city council, and all people that love this city and are committed to, to doing what they can to make it continue to be a great place to live. I think the piece that I try to bring, I'm not part of any special interest group, I think sometimes it's forgotten that about 70 to 70% of our city's budget comes from the residents, from their property taxes, and so I want to represent their voice first at city council. As I've mentioned before, I respond to every email, phone call that I've received over the last four years, I've met with individuals, I've had coffee on the front porch with groups of individuals regarding issues that they concern them, I've tried to explain on social media why I voted a certain way on the two or three issues that seem to have generated a lot of interest, because I think it's important that people understand what we're working on. Before my last election, even when we were running unopposed, I knocked on doors, because I wanted to hear from people, I've knocked on literally hundreds of doors this year as well, and have had great conversations with our residents. And then sometimes that will lead you to vote different than what maybe is coming to you from the city manager, though we have a great city manager. He runs the city, and we are blessed because of his work. But I, the issue that, that Ed referenced was tracking software, cell phone data, and I talked to residents whether they wanted their tax dollars to be used towards that, and everyone I talked to said no. And so even though I knew it was something that the city wanted, and maybe the chamber, I felt as it was my job to say, that's not what the residents want. So I'm the type of representative that the residents want to have on the council, and I ask for your vote in November.
Well, thank you, that wraps up feedback for candidates for city council. On behalf of Rockford Forum, I think I speak for everyone, not only in the room, but outside of these halls, thank you for taking the time and just the effort for running for council and providing your leadership and your skills to move this city forward. Thank you also, yes. I'll say what I said for Rockford, and thanks for answering the questions. Have a good night.